Call this November 12, 2013 work session of the Brookhaven City Council to order. Daniel, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams, District 1.
Present.
Councilmember Jim Iyer, District 2.
Here.
Councilmember Bates-Madison, District 3.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District 4.
Present.
Mayor Davis, we have a quorum.
All right. I don't have any open remarks. Pre-regular meeting agenda review. I'm sorry. Did you not go all the way down, Shannon Donnelly?
No, because I got caught by the lights and I thought that he would have done the proper thing and slowed down.
She was right behind us.
Yeah, police escort.
I'm telling you how you cut me off. But that's okay.
Tom, don't tell them what I did.
Okay. Here we go. Work session agenda. We have a number of items that we want to discuss with you that include either recodification or amendments, text amendments, to a number of matters. One is Chapter 14, land development codification, and I was looking around for Richard to see if he's made it through traffic. Okay, if we can pass on that and then just move to the next item. The next item, I've had an opportunity to discuss with each of you, and this is why it's appearing on the work session agenda, to formalize some discussion regarding how we handle our budgets. If you will recall, in your charter, the charter is very clear that there will be an annual budget and that it is made available to the public in advance, 30 days prior to determination of the budget by the mayor and council. During the height and frenzy of the first 30 or 45 days of startup, a proposed budget process came before you all in the form of an ordinance. And in that ordinance, it called out for the release of the budget to be 60 days prior to the determination of the council on the annual budget. What I would like to do, because that is in conflict with your charter, is to follow the stated guidelines of your charter, and that is to provide it 30 days prior to a determination. That determining date would be your public, would be your city council hearing date for which you would have the decision opportunity to move on your budget. This is not the public hearing dates that will precede that decision-making date. We're only required to have one budget hearing, public hearing, so we wanted to talk a little bit about that, too. But the purpose of this item is to get back in accord with our charter and to present that to you in an ordinance text amendment. One of the challenges, not really problems, one of the challenges that's brought up is that releasing that two months ahead of time is really misleading the public in that it is in such a draft form and that it's going through this evolution of change as we're working with the department heads and then working back with each of you as we sit down individually and review the budget and get your input and then, you know, make changes. So we would like to be able to have more of a definitive budget, even though it's still subject to change from your input.
I think that's a good idea, considering that there was quite a lot of consternation caused, in particular with the parks' initial figure, which, you know, we didn't have exactly what was going to be in the parks. We had to put something down, and it scared a lot of folks when they saw, I think it was $400,000, was it? I'm not sure what it was for the parks budget. So that was never our intention. It was just something you had to put in as a placeholder, and we put it in contingency, I guess, until we can decide where it needs to go.
Correct.
So I think it's a good idea to not unnecessarily alarm people on a draft budget that really is not going to bear much resemblance to what the final budget will be. You know, it caused consternation with me and with council and with the public and with you and everybody, and was just kind of a thing you had to do because we adopted that policy. So I think it's a good change.
I don't disagree with shortening the time, but I just want to, I would like to maintain the two public hearings. I think the schedule that we're on now with two meetings, a public hearing at each one, and then the vote at the following meeting. So we've got sort of a three-meeting review of the budget, particularly this time of year, which is setting the budget for the next fiscal year. I think it's important so that we make sure that people have enough time. Also, as we well know, people, sometimes until we have a public hearing, aren't really focused on something, and so to give them that second opportunity to speak their mind, I think is important.
I agree. I think it's a disservice for us to bring out something prematurely because of the stated, the confusion that it creates. I think with a 30-day notice, with the top priority being the availability of public comment. Jim, I think you're right on the mark with that. I think that works great.
Okay.
I would also favor publishing more of the details of the budget as well, and the closer we can get to a final budget, I think, the better. I agree. It's a problem putting out a budget prematurely, even before the council's had a chance to vet it.
Exactly.
But I think once we have something that we're ready to be reviewed by the public, you know, in the entrance of transparency, I would favor putting some more information online about that.
Right. I agree.
All right.
Okay. Well, we will prepare that text amendment and then have it for you at the council meeting for November the 26th.
Thank you.
All right. The next item includes a number of text amendments that we would like to talk with you about. And I think Tom and I will tag-team this a bit, if you will allow us. First, one of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention, and because this is a zoning ordinance text amendment, it will have to go to the Planning Commission for a recommendation. And we are already in the month of November, so they do have a hearing opportunity available to them in December. And we still have two hearing dates in December for the city council. So we would like to be able to move on this so that we can have more clarity in how we operate the department and more ability to properly respond to the development and building community. The first is, we've talked about this in the past, and that was to provide more authority to the community development director in terms of administrative variances. Right now, the director only has a 10% variance capability. I'm recommending 25%, and that would enable her to be able to hear some of these matters, especially where they deal with setbacks and basically projects are stopped until they can reach the ZBA on matters that are within their purview. But not only that, but also I think it would cut down on the number of cases going before the ZBA and, again, the time of waiting by the applicant themselves. So we are recommending that we go from a 10% allowance to 25%. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Tom. The city attorney and I have had some conversations about this, and in that 25% margin, first and foremost, it doesn't mean she goes to 25%. And secondly, she has the prerogative, and we would want that codified in the ordinance, that just because it's within her purview, that she can elect not to review it and pass that on to the ZBA. So that's done in other cities. And again, it's not a matter of expectation by the applicant. It is just a matter of applying, and a determination is made by the director, and the director can either review it and provide for it, whether that's approval or disapproval, or state that they wish to send it on to the ZBA and take no action on it.
Do you happen to know what other cities and counties have, what percentage?
20 to 25%.
Can we see some information on that, please?
Sure.
It just seems high to me, but I'm willing to look at it.
Do you want that prior to allowing us to move forward and provide the language to that and place that on the Planning Commission agenda? Again, if you're in agreement with that, I'd hate to lose time and not be able to, I mean, we can move it to the Planning Commission.
I'm in agreement in principle. You know, I would like to know if it's far out of whack with other counties or cities or whatnot, but I think it's a good move. I think it'll make us more efficient.
Yeah, I think if we can get that information on email, you know, then I think that we can review it.
Okay.
If something's not in line, then maybe we would put it on the brakes, but I think to move forward with it would be positive.
Do you foresee any downsides to this?
No, I don't, actually. I'm accustomed in my past to doing it, and it enables us to be able to respond quickly and not have a situation where someone basically is a stop. Now, that, again, you know, it needs to be made very clear that, you know, it's not an entitlement if you fall within that range that you get it. It's still a determining factor, as it is right now within her 10% mark allowance. She doesn't have to give it just because they meet the 10%.
Will there be limitations as to what variance?
Oh, yes. Just like what she has now.
What's your purview of what you can grow 10% of? Is it a setback?
Setbacks. Yeah. Setbacks in parking, so area regulations.
Street bumpers, too, right? Street bumpers.
Yeah. We'll provide to you a list of what her purview is right now, the parameters of what she has available to her, and then give you a listing of the metro area cities and elsewhere. Who's doing what?
Thank you.
That also goes to the ZBA. There is some discussion, and I'd like to be able to do that in the same format, to send to you in an email form, widening the scope of the ZBA. You know, they are limited in what they can review as a variance, and so we'd like to be able to open that up and provide that for your consideration as well. Such as? Conditions, one of the items is a condition placed on a zoning case. I'll give you a case in point on a recent case that I've been working with on a business owner here in Brookhaven who received a variance approval by the county ZBA, and they were allowed, the discretion of the ZBA was to allow the staff to make some decisions on the certain conditions that were assigned to that particular case, and I would see the same that could occur here, that if there was something that could have created a variance by the condition themselves, that they should have that opportunity. Now, we're going to talk in a minute about concurrent rezonings and variances at the same time as another matter, but these are just subjects that we found that there's been some limitation on the authority of the ZBA to be able to review and handle. We'll get that to you in an email and just list that, and then you can just give me feedback if you're ready to do something on that matter or you want to wait.
Thank you.
I'm in support of moving in that direction. My concern with the ZBA has always been that when citizens have an issue that has to come before the ZBA, they contact their elected official. Most of the general public doesn't know, you know, what's the purview of the ZBA and what's the purview of the city council, and so it's important that our ZBA has a pulse of the people. And I'm not sure what the solution there is, but that's always been my concern, is that the ZBA gets that message from the citizens about what their concerns are and that they hear that.
I think that's why the ZBA has public hearings. You know, it's the opportunity of the residents to come forward at that time and voice either support or opposition to a variance, you know, for that particular property.
Sure. I just think it's, you know, the general public doesn't sort of know that process, and they think, well, I'm going to call the city manager or my councilperson, and it puts a responsibility on us to make sure we get that information to them and it gets through the right channels and becomes part of the record.
Well, one of the things that we hope that can help solve that and maybe provide more information to the public, I know that Ms. Cannon's department is looking at launching in 2014 a zoning 101, you know, just to the citizenry to give them an understanding of what's a rezoning, what's the process, who's reviewing the applications and why. And that would be a good way and a good venue to use that as to what the ZBA does and even the Construction Board of Appeals. Anything that falls under the authority of the community development department would be a good exercise.
Good idea.
This is a little off-point, but DeKalb is about to adopt a revised zoning code. I don't know that we've even had a chance to look at it. We obviously just brought their old one over. Do we have any plans to look at that and see if there's things we like or don't like, or will we just hold off and rewrite ours when we get ready to?
Well, I think we're going to want to know what the county is doing, just for purposes of, you know, where we are contiguous to unincorporated properties, so we have an idea of what they can and can't allow, as well as what we could do that could impact them. So I think definitely there will be a review and an understanding of that by community development. But I see us, as we move forward with the comprehensive plan, that by the spring, even though we're still moving forward with the comprehensive plan, we'll begin to know and understand some of the changes that are about to occur and be ready to start recodifying the zoning ordinance so that we have a zoning ordinance that can enable the comp plan to be implemented. So we may get some good ideas from the county's revised zoning ordinance or amended zoning ordinance, so we'll definitely want to understand that. And that will come in play when we start the community engagement series through the comp plan, because there will be an understanding of what's going on in the county and how does that relate to what the city's doing, especially on character areas. We want to be sure we're not in conflict with where they're headed. And let's see, there was... I'm going to do concurrent. Okay. The last one that I'm going to do before I hand off the baton to our city attorney is that we've talked about this in a recent rezoning case, and that's concurrent rezonings with variance. There may be situations, especially with previously plotted lots or even properties that are seeking a rezoning and require some variation in order to implement and be able to build the project that they intend, and without trying to go to another zoning district that may complicate it more, or to create a new zoning category that would just fit that project. I mean, you never really want to put yourself in that situation. So it would be a code change to allow zoning, rezoning cases that by the rezoning request itself creates the need for a variance, that that would be handled by mayor and council concurrently. The advantage to that is that you don't set up the ZBA and put them in a position where they have to respond in the affirmative because somebody has received a rezoning and they're relying on that and then find that they can't build it without a number of variances. So we'd like to be able to bring that forward. And again, it would have the same caveat, that if you don't want to handle that and you feel like you only want to handle the rezoning part of it, you certainly could pass that on to the ZBA or in instances such as Mr. Madison just said, where do we have our finger on the pulse of what the community's looking for? That gives you that opportunity, not only to act on the rezoning, but also handle any complicated issue that may result as to rezoning a piece of property that requires a variance at the same time. So you would have better control over that, and you could have more conditions that you could impose that would be assigned to such a case. Any comments on that?
In principle, I have strong hesitancy about looking at concurrent variances. I've seen them used in the past in ways that I'm not comfortable using them. You know, you referenced the recent zoning case. That case should never have come before us, and the state that it did, you know, we didn't put anything off on, you know, that should never have come forward in the way it did, and I don't think that there should be, there should have been no reason that property couldn't have been rezoned and subdivided in a manner that was completely compliant with our zoning code. But as far as the council having the opportunity for concurrent variances, I'm not a big supporter of them. I guess I'd like to see more, but I just, I'm not, I think there's a ZBA for a reason, and I think we need to respect that reason going forward, and we just need to work a little harder to get the zoning right the first time. You know, I've seen a lot of concurrent variances and with just sloppy rezonings, that they use that as an opportunity to create something that there may or may not have needed to be done the first time around.
Right. And I agree with that line of thinking, and maybe I should have opened my comments with the purpose of these recommended changes is not to put you in a situation to be forced to say yes and to give license to an applicant to have a sloppy rezoning, to say, okay, well, I'm going to do this and I can vary my way to what I really want to do. Because you still have the authority and the power vested in your office to say no. But there might come a time where a rezoning of a particular piece of property does create the need to address a variance. And what I wouldn't want to have happen is that you entitle a property to a zoning classification and you leave them with nothing to develop to the point of being forced to go to the ZBA. I guess what I'm looking for is the opportunity for you to choose. If that makes sense, then you have the ability to do it. Otherwise, right now, you don't have the ability to do it. And I'd like for you to be able to have that on the shelf, and if it's appropriate, then you can use it when it makes sense. Without it, you, I think you travel in a slippery slope where, and I'm thinking, you know, about some of these projects that have been plotted in the past, and they're trying to come in and trying to do something that by an action of you as a council, this body, could create the need for a variance that we can't foresee at this point. So it's not to be used on a regular basis, but when it becomes necessary or where it makes sense. So that's really the purpose behind this comment. It's just to give you the tools when necessary.
Yeah. On face value, I think it really speaks to an opportunity to be more efficient and provide a cleaner process for applicants to the city. But I definitely want to understand, Jim, all of your concerns, you know, and make sure that I understand them. So, you know, it would be helpful if you can, you know, educate me a little bit on your concerns, because I think we do want to hear that.
Do you all want to just see some language and just to take it under advisement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you.
Can we get the city attorney's own microphone, too, at some point?
I'd rather stand up, but I'll speak from here. We, in the current zoning ordinance, for each zoning district, you have setbacks. And after you go through all the zoning districts of, which is the most part of all your ordinance, then there is a special requirement which says this, that if a subdivision has been developed at least 60%, and there are any lots that have not, you know, that are vacant, then you go to an averaging convention based upon 75 feet from where the house is being proposed, which is usually in normal cases, the two next-door neighbors, and you average their setback, and that's the setback that applies, assuming it's greater than what the zoning district setback is, requires. We've had two instances recently where plans were approved and permits issued where they were using the zoning district setbacks, and by error, those permits got issued because if you went out and measured it, there would have, the setback requirement would have been greater associated with that. In one case, it was discovered while they were digging footings, and I spoke with Ms. Cannon, and I suggested that the code enforcement go out there and tell them to stop work because it was in a situation that if it continued, because then the city having issued a permit, even if it shouldn't have been issued, it did issue it. And so there's the question of detrimental reliance and, you know, having to pay the cost of what's associated with that. So that was resolved, and the building was moved in order to, or the house was moved in order to comply with it. And we have another situation at 2802 Ashford Drive in which the same thing occurred, and in this instance, the house is well under construction. I would say that it's more than 50% complete. I went out and looked at the house, looked at the situation, looked at the residents on either side of it, and it didn't, you know, it didn't, it looked like it was probably off by about six to eight feet, you know, the house was that much forward that was there. I was consulted by Ms. Cannon, admitted, you know, that the permit should not have issued, but it did. The house was so far along, I said, don't issue a stop-work order, but notify the contractor and the owner of what the issue is and that, you know, so that they're aware of it, which they were so advised. If you go out and you tour this neighborhood, two houses down, it's either two or three houses down, there's another house that's newer, and it looks like it's, I don't think, it's not one that we permitted, but I think it was permitted by the county, it looks like it's at 35 feet when it should have been further back. So there's some inconsistency as to what has been taking place with regard to this. The other issue as it relates to this ordinance applies to vacant lots and it applies to addition to houses. In this particular situation, unless this was a vacant lot, this was a tear-down, and, you know, it's a different type, you know, type item.
When you tear down a house, you have a vacant lot.
Well, there might, yeah, I agree. I agree with what you're saying. That's the argument in there. But in any event, it is causing some difficulty with regard to what's taking place, and, you know, it should be consistent as far as what the setback should be for the zoning district as it's applied. And just because some people had chosen a long time ago to build their house farther back, why should that affect what somebody does in the future with regard to the setback that's been prescribed?
Right.
That's there. So that's the argument. So we have, so what we are suggesting is that either that requirement be eliminated or that you modify it in some way. In what way, I would not know, but...
Susan and Marie, because I'm very familiar with this issue, having built a house in the last couple of years, and this issue got me. I had to go to get a variance one. Really shouldn't have had to get one, but what are they doing in other jurisdictions when it comes to setbacks? This averaging thing seems to be illogical if you take it to the extreme.
Well, when it is taken to the extreme, you could render a lot undevelopable.
Right, right.
And then you do force a variance.
People that prefer big front yards as opposed to big backyard could force you to...
Exactly. And it's really who's first in line.
Right.
You know, if you decide you want to set your house back further because you have a deeper lot or a rear, a backyard is not important and you just want to meet the minimum setback, you can do that, and then you have, you've created a problem for your joint property owner, so...
And which is typically a larger problem, because, for instance, a national park, you know, the majority of the houses that are setback are single-story, 50-year-old bungalows, and what's being built are maximum-height, two- and three-story brick homes. And so to bring those forward, it creates an even larger impression of overshadowing the adjacent house. I mean, this was created by DeKalb County to try to preserve, if not the actual, but the intent of the streetscape in some of these older neighborhoods. And, you know, so they came up with the average setback that kept the houses back. There's been a lot of variances granted as a result of it, but the intent is to preserve the neighborhood and preserve the look. I mean, Ashford Road and Redding or in Ashford Park... I mean, Ashford Road and Redding or in Ashford Park are considered our quota state lots, and there's a lot of people, you'll hear a lot of people here tonight, I think there's a crowd coming tonight to speak out in opposition to this very house, and who want to preserve that, the character of those streets, and the way to do that is with the continuation of the average front yard setback.
Well, I think there has to be some happy medium, because what do you do, in fact, when you do render a property undevelopable, or you put them in a position that they can't move forward without a variance? And it becomes complicated in some ways, and it's, I guess we're trying to, you know, take the thread through a very small needle, an eye of a needle, but, you know, when a bank is looking at issuing a mortgage loan, they want to be sure that the area regulations assigned to that property pursuant to the zoning classification on that property are met. So that's what's important to them. And they sign off on the site plan, they sign off on the size of the house, and they issue a construction loan, and that's all she wrote. That's what they expect, that's what, when draws are made, the builder goes to the bank and says, here it is, this is what I've done, the inspector for the bank comes out and it makes an assurance that that has been properly met. Then you have a situation where sometimes, you know, these regulations aren't as evident in the zoning code from the standpoint of, oh, you know, there is a caveat here and we do setback averaging. And I think, you know, again, my happy medium perhaps would be, maybe there's an average to the average, you know, from the standpoint that you shouldn't be hurt by somebody setting back further, or if it is a bungalow. And maybe, you know, some of that is tied to when properties were all served by septic tanks, and many of the field lines were in the front yard. So that's, you know, a matter that needs to be considered, and, but I think before a property is found to be in trouble, where, you know, they have a setback so severe that the owner of the property that wishes a new house to be built is now in a hardship position. So, you know, what do they do? Because maybe they have children, they prefer having the larger backyard, because that's where they want the children to play, not in the front yard. So, you know, there are circumstances that come with every lot, and again, I don't have a number in mind, but my suggestion would be that maybe when a certain percentage of a setback exceeds, the zoning classification for that property setback is beyond 50%, that maybe there should be an allowance there, allowed by the director, to make a determination saying, okay, instead of a 30-foot setback, your adjoining property is setback 65 feet and on one side, and on the other side of that particular lot, they may be at 75 feet, and what does the rest of the street look like when you do have properties, buildings that are closer to the street? And maybe it should be, you know, where it exceeds more than 50% of what the setback is, that maybe you get some kind of bonus, that instead of a 30-foot setback as the zoning allows, maybe your setback only has to be 45 feet.
And does, I don't know if the current code allows for houses that are at the top of a curve, like if you, yeah, if your house is at the top of a curve, your house is further back...
Right.
...than the houses around you, and with setback, that's what I had to deal with. The setback averaging was forcing my house to go back, because there was a new house next to me and an older one next to me, but I was at the very top of the curve, and I had to get a variance because of that issue, and, you know, it's, I got it, but it was kind of scary to think about, well, if you take, if you extrapolate this out, really, people can really control what their neighbors doing by building the house further and further back, and...
Right.
Pretty soon, you could have it where 10 feet from the back of the yard is where the house has to be, because you're being controlled successfully like a domino.
I think the opposite is happening. I think all the newer homes are moving forward. I think you'll see all the variances are pushing the houses forwards.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, I think in most cases, the average is, it's not going, the average isn't going back unless it's back for a physical reason, unless there's topography or something, you know, that forces a house back. Most of them that I've seen have brought the house forward. You know, there may be an opportunity to reduce the rear yard setback. I mean, these guys, the builders really don't care what they vary, they're just, they're looking for a house size. And if we require a larger front yard, let's give them some relief in the backyard if that...
Well, and I think what you're gonna, right, and that's, that I think is the expected response. I mean, that was my review of this particular case that's coming up. But when you have a detached garage and that's already sitting back on the rear property line, there is no way to move further back without a variance, because everything shifts to the rear, and then you have a rear yard encroachment. And I guess that's, I mean, the idea of a house setback on a curve, you have the same situation even more extreme in a cul-de-sac. You know, so where, because of these pie-shaped lots in many cases, you know, those houses are forced back, but as you approach the cul-de-sac, where that lot, you know, is perpendicular to the road and not in the curvature of the cul-de-sac, gets penalized. So it's just difficult. It really becomes on a case-by-case basis what's out there. And then here's the other thing, what's to say when you do the cost, or it's cost averaging, I bet on the budget all day, excuse me. What's to say, we'll be talking about that later, what's to say when you start doing this averaging, that the very house you're averaging off of, because they have that extreme front yard setback, that bungalow gets torn down after you've built your house and been forced to come back further? Where is the equity there?
Yeah, I just think we need some kind of, like you said, a medium, some kind of compromise or not locked into something that doesn't make sense in every case.
Right, I think there has to be, and I think it really is, you know, a determining factor that the community development director with the chief building inspector, that when these situations arise, that you have to go out and do a field inspection, you know, with the builder, and a conversation, you know, with the adjoining property owners to talk about, well, here's what, you know, the sightlines are, here's what the view is along this street, and this is what the averages are. And I think just to say, you shall average just by itself, literally, is a hardship. It creates a hardship.
Yeah, that's my biggest issue with this ordinance is that, you know, I, as a property owner, would be affected if my next-door neighbor tore down their house and decided they were just going to move it all the way back. My lot becomes far less valuable because of that action by that neighbor. That is unfair, in my opinion.
At the same time, if they moved it so far forward that it blocked you, you wouldn't like that either.
That's right. That's exactly right.
It stops them from doing that, though.
Or we should have an order that stops them from doing that.
Yeah, and we've got a setback, a front setback.
Well, that's the whole point of the averaging. Remember that this averaging came about was a way to allow new builds to exist with our bungalows and our 50s and 60s.
It's the McMansion.
Housing, it's the McMansion, and on one hand, we want to encourage...
I prefer to call it new house.
We want to encourage new houses.
Right.
But on the other hand, we don't necessarily want to kick people out of their ranch-style homes, and we want them to be livable as well. So, again, I think we could come up with a way, that averaging is not perfect, you're absolutely right, and most variances, would you agree, Susan, that come before you are on setback, front setback issues? So it is, on one hand, we're handling this on a case-by-case basis, so it's not the worst thing in the world. So I have two questions. One is, if we grant this 25% administrative variance, the director could actually address maybe a good many of these averaging setback issues, that might take care of some of it. But, you know, maybe we need some language to really better clarify what it is we want to achieve. I mean, if we all agree, you don't want to allow a house built next to you that's going to block you.
Right, right.
You know, that's important, too.
I agree with that, absolutely.
And if somebody really wants to move all the way back from their previous front setback, well, then that's on them, yes, me, because I think your point is well-taken, too. So I would just suggest that we really think about what it is we want to accomplish.
Just something logical.
We're mostly redevelopment in Brookhaven, you know, except for maybe the Brookley Development and some other new places. We don't have new subdivisions coming in, and we're not going to. We're going to continue to see the redevelopment. So we've got to find a way that, well, in my neighborhood or in J-Maxx's neighborhood, those are established houses, and maybe some will be, I mean, yours burned down, but, you know, you don't have that many tear downs in your neighborhood. I don't. But Ashford Park is all, you know, is all about being redeveloped, so is Oak Forest and lots of other, Murphy Cantler, so...
Not to be contrary, but we've got like six going on right now.
Yeah, because we got a lot in Brittany.
The values are starting to pick up.
So let's really put some thought into what it is we want to accomplish. Again, I think we want, you know, peace in the valley, we want people to be good neighbors, but we also want new development, and we want to make sure that we're, that neighbors can coexist equitably and not diminish property values in any way.
What my goal would be, and in contrast with what Rebecca's saying, is just the principle that I don't think we want our government to be so inflexible that people get in bad situations because of setback averaging. So if we can keep setback averaging along with some common sense tools that are inserted into it, I think that was, you know, just, we don't want to be seen as inflexible and silly, because some legislating everything to the nth degree can end up with a lot of silly consequences, and we don't want to have that.
Yeah.
If we can keep averaging with some caveats and guidelines, and with, maybe with some Susan's, I think that's what I would like to see.
So if you could, you could suggest some guidelines that could maybe help us find this happy medium between the strict averaging and the absolute setback line?
If you have this averaging issue and the zoning administrator has this authority, whatever it is, 25%, 10%, then you've, you know, you've got to determine, is it the authority to limit the difference or increase the setback?
Could be either or, right?
Well, it could be either or, but that is...
Well, you might just allow some guidelines to that.
Or the other side of it would be is that, you know, in connection with that authority, if somebody wants to move a house back, that then she also had the opportunity to adjust those back set lines.
Because there's that one on Ash, on, actually, that first one that you and I looked at, there's where they had the footings. Obviously, I looked at that, and I was like, you know, that needs to come back probably six, eight, 10 feet, and I think, I don't know how far...
16.
Six, 16, whatever, 16. The strict interpretation would be 16, but I was just thinking, it looked, when I stood to the side and looked on both ends, it looked like it was a little, it shouldn't have been that close. But when I looked at the house, the new house next to it, they had kind of built their house, a new house within, I guess, five or six, seven years, they had kind of gone back a little bit and didn't utilize much of the, they were far beyond the 35-foot setback. And it was kind of, that was the exact problem was being, it was being brought up right there. They had a new house, or a house that had been built within six or seven years that was, I think, behind the older house that was next to it.
No.
About a couple of feet.
The new house that was built was at or near where the original house, that setback would have been established by an average front yard, and the house that's torn down, you know, there were two old houses there.
Right.
So that new one that you saw to the left of the Norton Thompson house was setback based on an average front yard.
I don't know that this is an official term for it, but let's avoid the buck-tooth phenomenon. So that one house that's sticking out, that just looks out of place, that's, we can all agree that that's not what we want, but I do believe this is an ordinance that does need to be cleaned up, that, you know, the average setback, and then the average that to the existing, you know, front setback, maybe that's the solution. But we still have to address the issue of, we've sort of talked about the policy, but we still have to address the current situation where there's a house that's pretty much finished, and we've got to figure out how we address those, that situation. I know the property owner is here and developer is here, I don't know if it makes sense for them to talk about it or the issues, but how can we, as a city, fix sort of the situation where we are today?
Well, it can be done one of two ways. We can go through the zoning board of appeals and, you know, be at their mercy, lay out the, you know, the circumstances under which it took place, or fix it by ordinance would be the other.
I'd like to see some language, and then we can kind of...
Okay.
Or talk about it and to hear from folks, if you want.
And under either case, you're going to have a public hearing on it. The only difference being is, is that if, given, you know, given the exposure by virtue of how far along this house is built, if it's council's, you know, if council wants it fixed, then we have to determine the best way to fix it. If you don't want to fix it, then that poses other issues.
Well, I certainly think that the city has an obligation to rely, to sort of stand behind its word, and that if we approve something and said that that's, you know, and gave reliance to the developer and the property owner to do something, it is hard for me to get behind the idea that we could pull the rug out from under them, when they relied on our approval to move forward.
I would rather argue their position than ours, but this is where we are.
Yeah.
I'd like to understand how it got permitted in the first place. Was it just lost in the shuffle? Was it just a staff oversight, or...
Somebody that hadn't used, hadn't, just assumed we didn't have setback averaging, or what, I mean, here we go. There, Susan.
I can just say that I believe that what was relied upon was the minimum of the district, which was 35 feet, versus the average setback.
Right, okay.
Had it been the minimum of the district, it would have met that requirement. So we made a mistake, we issued it in there.
Tom, when you say there's other ramifications, you want to...
Well, I mean, the other ramifications are, is that if you decide that you don't want to fix it, then you're really under an obligation to stop it. And then...
Then what Susan just said on the podium is exhibit A in the tree.
That's right. That's right. I mean, but, you know, it is what it is. I mean, mistakes are made. I, you know, I've talked to Susan, there certainly wasn't anything sinister that took place in connection with this, it was just a mistake, and I don't know how long this house has been under construction, but to me, it looks like it's been at least four months or so, so I'm sure at the time that this took place, they were still getting comfortable with this ordinance, which, you know, you got to look hard to find this, but it's there, you ultimately, you know, you come across it.
No, it was an amendment added years later.
It's not typical for other jurisdictions, I guess.
I've not seen it.
It's very well-known to builders in Brookhaven, DeKalb areas.
How would we fix this tonight?
You're really not in a position that you can fix it tonight, because it's going to either require an ordinance, which is going to require a public hearing, or...
Or...
Or the expansion of the administrative variance provision to allow it to be done that way.
How much off is it? What distance is it, not percentage, but what distance is it forward of the required setback?
The average setback requirement is, is this one, the average setback requirement is 50.05, and it's currently approaching 13.55 feet.
So it's at 37, 36 and a half feet?
It's at 36 and a half.
It's behind the 35, that's why I...
Right.
If you did apply that, the administrative variance thing, what...
How would that fix it?
This is outside the realm of the existing 10%.
Oh, 25%.
Uh, let me do the math.
It's pretty close. 10% is 5, 30% would be 15, so you're around 28, 27%.
Well, if you divide 35, it depends how you want to do it, you divide 35 by 7, I mean by, what do I divide it by?
By 25%.
By 25.
Well, 25% of 50.05 would be, somebody do the math.
25.
Okay, and it's 13.55, so it's outside the realm of the increased 25.
By two feet.
So it's a foot outside, it's a foot outside of that 25, so it's, you know, 30%.
See, in instances like that, when you're that close, you know, there's a way to work with the builder to shift that garage or do something.
Oh, yeah, this is as existing footing, so they, I mean, they could move it back to some right now, and it would be within the 25%.
Right.
Okay. So as it stands now, they're 13 and a half in violation, or out of the...
You know, I'll point out that just down the street on Winding, there's a beautiful brick house, it's got a very plain, flat front on it. It used to have a beautiful porch, until somebody figured out that it was forward of the front setback, and DeKalb had them take the front porch off.
Well, that's not, we don't want to do that.
You know, and I'm just saying that there are examples of situations where the permit has been issued, and the house has been modified after the fact to meet the case, and again, this is, it's next read over, two blocks down.
That's, I'm just going to say that, that's exactly what I don't want to do.
And in this particular case, the architecture of the home would not, I mean, part of the porch is flush with the front house, there'd be no way to...
But they, with their footings, I mean, from what I understand, they could move it back.
Not this house, this is...
This is the one that's four months under construction.
Oh, this is the one with the walls?
Yeah, the Norton Thompson.
This is the one that's so far along, the one with the footings.
Ready for finishing.
I probably shouldn't say this, but this was the foundation that Ronnie Mayer was, if you remember back when we were considering, and we passed the ordinance that removed the height of the front setback, this was the foundation that Ronnie was referring to when he said, you need to come look at this house in Ashford and see how ugly it is next to the, adjacent to the one next door. And they're trying to force a basement out there. They've got a big concrete wall sticking up in the air on the front of this house. This is the house that he was referring to. So when did we pass that ordinance? That's how long it's been under construction.
So what, so we got two, two houses that we have to deal with, right?
Actually, one, the one with the footings has been fixed.
Oh, it has? Okay. So we don't have to deal with that one anymore? Okay.
It's actually an admin variance and they moved the footing back.
How far did they move it back, do you know?
From memory, I can't remember. It's four, five, six feet, somewhere in that range.
So we're talking about a house that's already, the second option, the one that's a little more extreme, the more problematic.
It's extreme.
I guess I would rather find a solution for this specific property rather than change the ordinance to...
Changing the ordinance is, I don't think should have anything to do with this one property.
Shouldn't.
Right. We don't want to...
I don't see this as a...
Is it such a bad solution to just put it through the ZBA?
How long would that process take?
It's going to be advertised. It's a public process. Let me look at the...
Gut feeling is 45 days.
But if we use our secondary public organ, we can save some time there.
My preference is certainly, the city is the one that has made a mistake here. It seems inappropriate to penalize, penalize the builder for our mistake. You know, I don't know what to fix it. So I mean, but...
Well, and that's why I think, you know, we're desperate for a solution for the builder. There was a reliance.
Well, what do y'all recommend we do? Or what can we do besides just?
Well, does the administrative variance take care of that?
No. No, I think the, I think the ZBA would be the course to take if we're not going to do something by, that's the only course to take. And then if the ZBA, what occurs, and this is what will, you know, what can happen is that you can have, that the ZBA decision, if it is passed, can still be appealed by another, an aggrieved owner who would have standing in order to do that. So that's, that's really by taking it through that process. Just by, you know, if they were to grant it, there's still a 30-day appeal period that some third party could come in and file the appeal. I haven't looked at the, as far as, but that, that appeal of that would be very difficult. It's a problem, you know, to make. Normally, the ordinance is granted that even where you have messed up and the ZBA has fixed it, then that's a, that's a, you know, that's a fix itself.
I understand from the, from the owners of the property that there would be a financial burden on them if, if this is delayed 45 days or what, you know, to the extent of, you know, higher interest loans or losing the loan that they have on a construction permit. So I don't know if it's appropriate to have them explain that or not.
Absolutely. I mean, that's your, that's your pleasure, Mayor.
Are they here?
Yeah.
The owners here.
If we're going to open this up to a public hearing, I would...
I don't know if it's a public hearing. I think it's just an informational...
There are residents coming to the city council meeting to speak out in opposition and I'm not sure that I'm comfortable hearing.
I just want to know what their, what their issues, I mean...
The only purpose would be to get the facts.
Could I ask this? Because this is not customary at a work session that this is for staff to be able to work with mayor, council to go over items on the agenda. And I know you're anxious to hear from the property owner and the builder. I would just caution you on doing this because you could open Pandora's box and somebody who may not have such a severe problem would rely on the fact that you heard from somebody else in a work session.
You're talking about precedent.
And since we know people are coming, I would hate for the people that are coming to speak to you all under public comment tonight to miss an opportunity to hear what the builders think. He may say something that may change their minds and they may come up to the podium instead of opposing. They may support and thank.
Got it. Got you.
So getting back to your other issue, Marie, about the percent difference that you're looking to get. So basically, what we have now is a fairly rigid standard. And you're asking for permission to have leeway on that, which, good arguments, it makes sense. This is Bucky over here.
Sorry.
He's got a faulty chair.
You've got the chair that I didn't want to sit in during our exit session.
Somebody swapped chairs.
I know.
You're advancing.
It's a council gag.
So I think it makes sense, is my take on this. I think you've presented a good argument. What we're being asked to rely on is the professionalism of the people going out there and their call on it. I would like to maybe suggest that maybe once a quarter you come back and give us a report of where this has been used. Let's get a, let's get a take on it so we as council can help keep our pace with the virtues of this and we can keep evaluating it as it progresses. What I don't want to have lead to are people saying this favoritism, for example, being given, which there's room for this. So I just want to keep, make sure that we monitor it.
I agree.
But I think the flexibility definitely would be in the benefit of the homeowner, the development, as long as it's taken into account the opinions of the area and the professional judgment of people to make a call. I mean, was this particular site visited before the permit was given, just out of curiosity? Do we know? Okay, so we use a standard setback, which ended up being...
Are the plans that were submitted exactly where the house is located now, where they built?
It appears to me.
Okay.
Well, see, this is a case where if somebody went out there and saw it and said, this doesn't make sense. We probably need to look at this. That wasn't available.
Operating under something, there was no setback averaging.
That wasn't available. This option wasn't available to you all that time.
At some point, our inspector inspected the footings and signed off on it.
Correct.
Because he wasn't considering the average.
Right. It meant, it meant what the approval was for. Yeah, it makes a lot of sense. Nothing is cast in stone, so we need to, there needs to be a realm of flexibility. As long as it's used prudently. And I think if we stay on top of this and monitor it, maybe just once a quarter, I don't want, not suggesting anything excessive. Let's keep, let's keep a watch on this and monitor it.
I think that's a good directive, actually. And I want to state it again, and hopefully it shows up in the minutes in boldface, all caps, that this recommendation that's being made to you all is not to set a new standard for development and construction. It is not a standard for which the developers and builders can build by thinking they've got a 25% grace. You know, that's not its purpose. You know, it's when hardship exists, when there are circumstances that prevent, you know, abiding by the regulations, whether it's a topographic issue or something along that matter when a hardship is created. So I think it's important that everybody understand that we're not giving you a 25% fudge factor. Because I've known community development directors, including myself, who said, take it down. Fulton County is well-known for habitual violators where they have required that the houses be taken down, where there's been abuse of not adhering to the setbacks. And all we're trying to do here, and what I'm suggesting, is sometimes circumstances are created where, in the best interest of the overall neighborhood and the development activity, to be responsive and to use common sense, as the mayor has said earlier. And that's really what it's about. Does a hardship exist? Does it create a devaluation of existing or surrounding properties? You know, does it impede the development activity of others? You know, if all of those can be answered, no, it doesn't create this, it doesn't create that, then the answer should be yes.
So this, in what I'm hearing from you, is the exception, not the rule?
Correct.
Of when this should be used. So maybe in the verbiage of what you supply us, well, I'll just offer this as a suggestion. Perhaps the first council meeting, the beginning of each quarter?
Okay.
Just come back and say, this is how many times it's happened, give us an example of hardships. I mean, if we get to a point where we're doing 20% to 30% of, you know, then we got a problem.
Well, exactly. Well, and here's the other thing, that's a good measure. And I've used it myself for a number of years. And it was a way that I monitored the ZBA. And if they were granting variance after variance after variance to certain regulations, it was time to change that regulation. And that's a reporting back that comes to the mayor and council to say, 50 variances were granted on this, this particular provision. It's time to change the provision. So, you know, that's, that's a reporting back that's going to be very important to you all as well. And just for the record, when it comes to administrative variances, you have a very, very stingy community development director. It's not, it's not given by happenstance. They have to work for it and prove that they need it. There's a hardship.
We know that.
I think, Joe, to Marie's point of the variance list is exactly the tool that you're looking for. You know, and that's going to show, highlight what are the variances that we're approving. That's the problem area.
Okay, good.
All right. Anything else on this? Okay. Thanks.
I just have one question. Were we going to consider any changes in the stream buffer?
Thank you, yes. Thank you. That was on my list up here, but not down here. Absolutely. We would like to take a look and have you consider, right now, we have 75 feet. The stake requires 25, and then we have another 25, and then on top of that is yet another 25. We would like to reduce that. Susan, did you talk about 25 and 25?
25 is, again...
With the state's stream buffer and then another 25.
And that, out of 50 is...
Correct. So to change that from 25 state, of course, we can't adjust that, but instead of the 50 feet on the back of that first 25, to reduce that to 25.
Total of 50.
Total of 50.
Standard 75?
Correct.
What's, what's the argument against the minimum of 25?
Your paths and your walkways along your creeks. You may not be able to meet your own ordinance requirements for the improvements that we've talked about previously.
There's a lot of cases where those have been allowed adjacent to creeks and streams. Just, they may have to be done a different way. I guess, the, does that get in the way of the model ordinance that we passed for EPA, EPD in there as a 25-50?
25 is really the hard rule by the state EPD.
I thought the 50 was a soft rule that they encourage for local issuing authorities.
We'll look it up to be sure.
What's the argument against going down to 25? What's the reason for that additional 25?
Well, I think you want some protection. You know, you don't want to create improvements there where, you know, you can't have an eroding factor and, you know, what...
Depends on what it is. I mean, sometimes it depends on what kind of structure it is that was in that area too. Because if you've got posts from a deck rather than a concrete foundation, it's a different animal as far as what kind of, if you're not putting an impervious surface that close, it's different than if you're putting posts, you know. And so there's all kinds of, I think 25 is, I think, I think, I think it's kind of, you got to make sure we're a little bit better stewards. I think 50 would be fine, but 25 is...
I always thought the Environmental Protection Agency was, was a really tough steward to make sure. And they're saying 25. I'm just trying to understand a little bit better.
I mean, we have a lot of infill in Brookhaven. We have, you know, so, and we have some streams. And so we kind of, I think 75 feet is, in my mind, has always been a little without question. You can't, Jim?
No, I don't disagree with you. Plus, I agree there's other ways you can provide the same water quality. I guess what I would suggest is that if we look at a reduction, because where it impacts the most in my mind is, is the single-family lots. And maybe we live at the 50-foot, the single-family lot, right?
For the commercial, yeah.
Commercial, you know, maintain the 75 or maintain the equivalent of the 75 using some modified water quality structure in a commercial lot.
What if in a, what if in a commercial district, they adhere to the 25-foot mandated buffer and then there's another 25 feet, but the last 25 feet, they'd like to make it a pervious surface?
They're fine with it, you know.
But they'd want to put in, you know, some sort of those brick pavers where the grass is growing through and you see that in the dirt all over the place.
And that's considered an alternative water quality measure.
I think we need to look at some buffer averaging too.
Yeah.
Stand up.
This is accurate, Susan, here.
To me, the goal is to still be good stewards of our waterways, to not add to flooding or erosion. But I think since DeKalb first passed the 75-foot buffer, there's been an explosion in ways to, to take care of our streams and prevent flooding. And I'm very anxious, as you know, to open up trails along our creeks. I think you can do that in a very sound, environmentally sensitive way. So I would ask for your guidance to bring us back. You know, let's be good environmentalists, but let's, let's open up our nature to the people and start enjoying it and...
Yeah, our stream, you know, the North Fork, you know, if we want to have some developmental that enhances that, 75 feet, my say, you can't have an observation deck. You can't have a, you know, it's...
No, there are ways to permit, you know, variances that are available and those types of things. But the, you know, the 25 feet is statement. And unfortunately, the problem we have is the state's definition of state water is greater expanded. You know, it used to be a blue water stream and it's now...
Now it's a part-time stream sometimes.
It's even beyond that. And it's a drainage ditch.
It's a wellhead stream.
Yeah, it's a drainage ditch. So, you know, that's part of the problem we have is that, is that there's been this proliferation of stream buffers because the state has continued to increase their, or decrease their definition of what is quote flowing water. So, you know, that's part of the problem we have. But, you know, I guess at the end of the day, I'm not opposed to the, to the 50% in single-family residential planted lots because that's where we have the majority of our issue. But I would like to somehow look at some alternatives and look at some, some other things that are available to provide in 10 of the 75 feet, which is water quality in an alternative structure, like Marie mentioned, the pervious soil. You can put pervious concrete or brick pavers out there and it lets the water weave down into the ground and leads to, so there are ways to do it.
Done a lot about it at Marist in their new apartment.
Oh, yeah. There's bioswells, there's retention ponds, there's pervious asphalt, you know. So that's what I'm saying, environmentally and engineering-wise, we've come up with all kinds of ways to take care of the runoff, in fact, improve it so that it's less floodable, flood-prone. And I, we just need some flexibility to do that.
So if we can take those comments with, I think, that's, we want to, we want to do something and just give it back to us with, you know, some solutions.
We'll look at that because, you know, other cities in the metro area that also have creeks and streams have made some adjustments there too. So we'll...
I would also say, let's find a way to try to incentivize maybe some of our older properties that have big parking lots that go right up to the streams. I mean, if they could peel them back and get rid of that, you know, impervious surface, we ought to, we ought to find ways to reward them to do that.
All right, we got to move on here. Where are we?
We are down to the fire marshal.
Okay.
And Tom has been working with the city attorney with the city of Decatur. We've gone through a couple of iterations of the IGA. We're very close and...
Well, the, for there to be another turn back from the Decatur city attorney, he wanted to be with his clients. He assumed that was going to take place last week and he was not able to. So it's still, it's still in draft form. And I also had a conversation with the county relating to the services that they are holding on to associated with that. So there may be some tweaking to make sure that there's no overlap between the two.
So is it, we're going to have to wait another two or three weeks for the...
Well, and, you know, if they're able to, you know, it's already been approved as far as, as far as both councils have approved entering into it. It's just a matter of working out the... of working out the language between the lawyers.
Well, does, does the finalized agreement have to go back before them at their regular council meeting? Or can it just be emailed? I mean...
No, they've already passed it.
Okay, so...
We're not getting in touch with the city manager tomorrow.
We just really want to...
I know, we are desperate for this.
If I need to make a phone call, let me know. Because it's, I just don't want to hear another story from another business that, "We did everything right, Brookhaven, but we're being held up by the..." Sure, we all would like to have that situation.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, moving on to other business that will be coming up at later agendas. First item is, oh, wait, excuse me. We need to go back up to chapter 14, item number one. Richard can address that. Susan, excuse me.
I thought we were waiting on Richard.
I know, I thought we were. Sorry.
That's the mountain, Rex.
That's right. Sorry. That was about your floodplain.
Actually, we need to retrofit the DeKalb County land development regulations to make it our own. We do have certain items in there relative to land development process, plating process, the tree ordinance, all of those things that need to be retrofitted. So we'll be working for, looking, working on that, and we need to move forward with that.
Okay.
What do you think the timeframe is on that?
Well, we'll be working with Mr. Curry on that. So post-haste, very quickly. We need to get that done.
And you'll take a look at the revised DeKalb zoning code to see what, how they've changed theirs, or does that even matter?
That particular component is not part of the land development component. This is, this is just in the city code portion. The permit, the, excuse me, the plat procedures, the environmental controls, the tree ordinance, those things that are not part of the zoning ordinance. That's what we're dealing with. But in regard to your question, I have looked at the summary of the update to the code. It's pretty extensive and exhaustive. So I'm not sure that we can tackle that right now, but we certainly would need to do that later on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, other business, park grants announcement. You'll recall in your amended 2013 budget, we included $250,000. And we've talked about this some at previous meetings whereby we are working with the friends of the various parks on ideas that they have that they'd like to see some improvements. These are very limited. It's right along the same lines of your sidewalks. This is the annual Christmas present gift back to the city, something that we can do very quickly in partnership with the community. We want to be careful that we don't go way outside the bounds of cost or changing the face of the park, if you will, absent having our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So the plan is, I'm reviewing these with the mayor, and we will be coming back on November the 26th with recommendations. And this is for the 2013 funds.
Okay, do we have, I know Rebecca has done a little bit of work on this, on the park improvements that, with the Murphy-Candler area and whatnot.
Yeah, but that's a pretty tiny project.
Right. I know. We need to have some more.
Yeah. And there's another project that made itself known here, just in the last day, that I was, in District 1, that I was...
The bathroom, okay.
That I was going to talk with Rebecca about.
I had two questions. One, I guess we're going to talk a little bit about when we're going to buy, actually buy the land. I would think it'd be a little bit difficult to execute contracts to improve the part of a bank up Murphy-Candler Lakes.
Correct.
Since we don't own the land.
Exactly. And every time we have that opportunity to mention that, I mention it, that, you know, we don't own it yet. We're just the operator. And so these would be grants that would come forward that we could consider and then be ready to launch after the acquisition of the parks.
Now, is this different from some other money that we're going to put into the parks?
Yes, absolutely. Completely separate.
Flower planting and things?
Yes.
Okay.
So we just, December 20, or November 26th, we just see the list and we're happy and...
Well, I'm going to be talking with you all between now and then.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. I already know yours, Mr. Iyer.
Thank you.
For a long time.
I'm glad you do, because I don't know mine. So, you know, I don't know all of them.
I thought it was something like briarwood, wasn't it?
It was, but there were supposed to have been some other things. We talked about Ashford Park and some others, so...
Okay, well...
I look forward to seeing my list when it's available.
Well, you might want to provide me your list, then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have to, so council, we need to get some specific projects. I know, I know some of that, this has been in the works for a while, but we've got to get a little more oomph to those.
Can I get, can I get my percentage carried over to Nick Sherer when I get a park?
Yes, sir, but I...
None for you, Joe.
We have something in there to talk about for the 2014 budget that we could carry over to make that even more special.
Marie, I know we're not on the budget yet, but I'm looking at the, under the HOSE tax fund, the city grants matching funds. I see 250 under proposed 2014, but you're saying this is...
Yes, that's going to be a carryover. This is, my suggestion is to have this as an annual event. So that is 250 in the 13 budget, and then 250 again in the 14.
We'll do the same thing next year.
Right.
With just more time.
Like sidewalks and parks.
The best part about that, that's a $500,000 improvement in parks. That's, that's money well spent.
Right. Okay. Okay, boards and commission appointments. We do have some members that are rolling off, and those announcements, you know, will be made formally at the next meeting, November the 26th. So just as a reminder, the next item, the Brookhaven Park County Service Center, just want to make comment on that as it goes to what Tom has been working on with the parks, with the county to acquire the parks. We're trying to be, we need more definitive information as to this particular property as it's found within the overall Brookhaven Park, what belongs to what the county understands as a park, and what belongs to other sources of funds that provided that land for that purpose.
Did you see the, I'd sent you two deeds for that park. Did you get a copy of those, for the front half and the back half?
Yeah, the county has given that to me. And the front part, from what I understand, the history is, it used to be the old, old VA hospital.
The whole park was.
Yes. And now the park is actually in two separate parcels. And the front parcel is the county's health center. And they don't propose, they're taking the position that's not part of the park, but that the park in the back, that's the other parcel, is part of the park. And as I relayed to them, that we didn't really see issue with that. However, we need to make sure that we had access to the back park, because there's no access other than through that, that front parcel that's there.
So DeKalb is going to maintain the ownership and operation of the...
That's where their, that's where their health center is.
And the maintenance of the, of the service center?
That's right.
What about the, what about the facade, the entrance, the Peachtree Street, visibility of that?
That's, that would be there, that would remain to DeKalb.
Which I don't want to alter, I don't want to offer opinions on it right now, but it's hideous.
And I'm working with a representative of the friends of that park.
Well, I'm saying, you're going to get access to the roads. Can we also get access to street scape improvements and/or, you know, the land improvements right there?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can ask for that, because we're going to, we're going to have to have an easement. So if there's any other rights that you want as far as easement access to do any sort of beautification, then we can identify where that is, and we'll include that in there.
I'd like to be sure that we include that, include in that dialogue the friends of Brookhaven Park who've been active in that park for quite some time.
I've been talking with them, in fact, meeting with them next week.
Yeah. And I know that, you know, the reality is, I think, DeKalb County, even if they're going to continue to operate that, they'd love to have that cleaned up in their behalf in some way to make it look more attractive, too.
So two things. Is there a standard for what cleanliness is, is what you're saying? You know, it's got to be our standard, number one. Number two is, we may not know what improvements or beautifications we want to do at this particular point. So it should be so worded so that we have the option and right to do it down the road.
Well, where you would identify is the area in which you would want to be able to do that.
Well, it may be other areas, though.
And then have them grant the right for you to do so. So there's, there's a site plan, and you can look at that and determine, you know, where the issues are. Your problem is, is that you only have one, there's only that one little entrance that's just off Peachtree Road.
Right.
That you can get into both of them.
Right.
And there's no access to the back property. So we've got to be able to go through that property in order to access the Brookhaven Park in the back.
Is there any issue with parking, then?
Well, with, if...
That's very limited.
With this, with this arrangement, there's, there's no parking on the park property, proper.
Seven 24?
What's that?
Seven days a week, 24 hours? Or, I mean, is there a certain times when...
No, I mean, technically...
The school's not in session on weekends, so...
We don't own it.
All of the parking that you see at that property now would fall within the property that DeKalb is going to retain under their ownership, so...
So, so we need to ask for a, for a park, you know, an easement to park?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
You know, how about, how about, how about a land share agreement?
Well, we're going to have to have those conversations, because the frontage of that park, of that service center, is in the LCI overlay.
Right. Well, see, a land share agreement allows us to make improvement on the property, which is to their benefit.
Right. But because of their use and their requirements, there may be some expectation to continue shielding and not allowing any access.
Yeah.
Through to their property. Now, what that access looks like, something better than the chain link fence that's there, you know, we just have to have that conversation with them. But we're going to have to have it because it's part of the LCI overlay.
I mean, it would also be, be good that if they ever stop using it.
Right.
That we'd be able to take that.
Okay, so does that mean that we have to negotiate for first rights, for first rights?
What, the resolution you have before you this evening, there's no negotiation. You're buying, you're making an election to purchase all the parks. And so what we're doing is, we have this one, one piece of property that they don't consider a park, and really, it's not, because it's operating the county health facility. And so you elect, you pay $100 an acre, your total cost for all these parks are about $24,000. So, and it includes, you know, every, all the fixtures, all the buildings and everything that's on these parks. It just doesn't include the personal property.
What would, what would be the process to, should we form a committee? Or, I really think we probably want to start looking into discussions with DeKalb County of either helping to move or relocate that facility. It might even involve, you know, the city investing in some other facility for them, or, there's a lot of empty buildings in DeKalb that we could negotiate some kind of, something that's agreeable to them. It's just such valuable parkland for us, that to be shut out of it completely is just terrible.
If I could suggest, I think really at the stage where we are right now, I think the conversation should continue with the city attorney and the county attorney. And I'd like to talk with the county manager as well, because part of this, there are restrictions, and you're going to have to follow the money. You know, that the money was specifically for this particular purpose. And, you know, there is a long line of the succession of how, you know, this was first federal monies, and then it couldn't be granted to the county. It had to go to their Health Services Agency, and there's some state law on that. And so, you know, we've got to understand better how we can, one, help them find another place that would best serve them, and then work through that with the county, because there's going to have to be...
And the users. Let's not leave the users out there.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, certainly, right. But there's going to have to be, you know, how that release occurs, you know, we want to be sure that it's not made available to the public to try and purchase, that it goes from the county back to the city. But it's got to be released from the Health Services Administration back to the county. And there's going to have to be, I'm sure, you know, some purpose, as many federal funds and all the projects where land is purchased.
I'd like to just stop right there on this, just to make sure, from my comment just a second ago, that there are Brookhaven residents whose family members go to this facility.
Yes.
And we're not talking about doing anything other than talking. If it's, if the best for the, for the city and for the people that use that facility is to keep it there, if that's what comes about, that's, that's another option as well. And we're not talking about doing anything right now other than exploring options.
Exactly. And that's why I just like, the conversation is just to continue with the attorneys and with the managers.
I think, I think as far as the, I'm sorry, I think as far as the park negotiations, we need to make sure that we can maintain a 50-foot landscape maintenance or improvement easement along Peachtree and down Osport, obviously subject to the, subject to the owner's approval for any, any changes that are made in that area. We also need to, would like to have rights to use the parking when the facility is closed, evenings and weekends, for people while using the back half park lane.
Improving the parking, too, because there are a lot of potholes.
Yeah, I mean, to the, yeah, I mean, to the extent, you know, but, but, yeah, I think at the very least, we need, we'd like to see those two items included in whatever...
So you would also, as far as the, the parking goes, have an easement for that, but also you want the ability to maintain?
Yeah.
Maintain, maintain the parking, do whatever. You don't want the obligation, but you want the...
The right, but not the obligation.
Yeah. Exactly.
Otherwise, they'll, they'll wait you out.
Okay, so the elect, electing to purchase the parks tonight on the agenda, are we, after we do this, are we going to be able to see an inventory of where the actual, where we're being told the parks are located? Like, because this issue came up, obviously. I think there are going to be other ones as well, especially over near Blackburn and then near probably Linwood Park. There's a couple...
There are 13 of them, Daniel, if it's possible.
Yeah, but some of them are called One Park.
Put them on the screen.
Some of them, yeah.
Because we have a...
Okay, yeah, if you could put them up.
Which has, there's a, with the acreage and everything else, and where they are.
And a map?
It's on, it's on, we actually have a, there's, there is a parks map that's been prepared, which also shows the acreage of the, are you able to stick it on here?
No, do you have it on electronic?
Remember what you sent me?
I thought we had it as on our...
Can you stick that thing up there?
But Tom, the...
To the broader agenda, since this is on there, okay.
Can you talk about the, there are additional lands that are all over the city of Brookhaven that the county purchased, either from a green space or...
I made that inquiry. I talked about, are there any park, you know, the bonds that they sold for the parks, are there any unexpended funds?
12 million.
They told me that if we think there are any, then we'll have to sue them, and they'll fight us.
Let's not go there.
Like they're doing with Dunwoody. And the other, and I made that inquiry also about all the green space from the, from the grants that were done from the state of Georgia as far as the acquisition of lands. And it was like looking at deer in headlights. I mean, it was, you know, well, clue, as far as, as far as, as far as the attorneys go. And...
We can still, even though we've got the deer in the headlights, maybe they, maybe we'll keep asking the question, and maybe they'll...
Well, true.
Is there another source other than these, these folks?
Well, you know, as we, you know, one of the other proposals is to, is to get some, do title services on these parks to make sure we know what we have and what sort of easements are in there. They're also retaining an easement. If they, they have water and sewer lines running through the parks, they're going to retain an easement for that. We don't know where they are.
Can we go ahead and engage on the title searches?
Yeah, they've got a resolution for that.
Okay, that's on there? Okay, great.
So, and, and if so, we can expand it to have them search for anything that the county may have been granted along streams or anything else. So...
Yeah. If it's possible, Marie, I think it'd be very helpful if the city started to compile that list. I know that, I think that if we got the word out to our residents, you know, let's be proactive in telling them, "Look, these are areas we've identified that we'd like to take over for such and such reason."
And there's, there's other ways for us to find out. I mean, early in, I believe it was Governor Sonny Perdue's term, he made green space dollars available, and they went to the county, counties. And then the counties, in turn, granted some of those funds back to the municipalities. And ARC was very involved in that. And there is a way to track that information down as to, you know, what was made available. I mean, Tom and I have also talked about monies from the Stormwater Utility that was purchased along, you know, streams and creeks for green space, you know. That's, that's not parks, but it's under the utility. And we're, we now own the utility and are operating it. So there is an inventory that has to occur. I've had conversations with Jones Lang LaSalle. They've been engaged by the county to inventory all county-owned property. And I've talked with them specifically about green space, park land, Stormwater Utility, floodplain money that was used to buy land or to purchase properties where a remnant piece was left. So we're... buy land or to purchase properties where a remnant piece was left. So, we're, we're trying to get our hands on, on all of that. So there are some sources out there.
So, just out of curiosity, after this first round, let's say we go through a round, we get the deeds, we submit, we buy, we discover after that point, there is a procedure to follow through at that point, where we can still go back and gain and recapture?
You would continue, so there's no time limit under the statute, you can go and elect to acquire more.
All right, so we can go ahead and get it done, and if there's anything we missed, we can go back and get that, okay.
Right. So if something was bought out with FEMA flood control money, is that county property? Is that stormwater?
That could be part of the stormwater or floodplain management, and since we have our own floodplain management ordinance, and you all made changes to that, Chapter 14, we would want to be able to own that.
Because we know those properties back on, Richard knows about them.
Yeah.
Back, back by the Peachtree Creek that were bought out.
Yeah, we would want to be able to own all of those.
Okay.
All right, we gotta go, move along, we gotta get to-
Okay, we'll just start with the consent agenda, and that includes, of course, minutes from meetings from October the 22nd, both work session and regular council meeting.
Okay.
Also, in the consent agenda in your packets is the 2014 land use process and meeting calendar, that's the deadline dates to file and to get on the Planning Commission and ZBA. Well, that's item number four.
Okay.
Which is the ZBA meeting calendar also.
So those have been screened for holidays and-
Yes.
Okay.
Then we have announcements, I don't know if there are gonna be any this evening. We have reports and presentations, and this is the sidewalk installation update. That is, you know, where we have been talking with you all about areas where we can fill in the blanks or the missing pieces. This is not new sidewalk construction, it's not repair, it's just to connect the dots. So we do have sidewalks identified in all of the districts, and I will be giving you that information, so you have the maps in front of you, so when each of you make comment on that, you can have that in, in front of you. And we're very excited about that, and it is my hope that you will allow this to be a, an annual event as we get towards the end of the year, so that we can celebrate the holiday season, or celebrate the anniversary of cityhood. Paving street announcement, we'll have that information for you as well, and this is, these are small projects identified through the laser truck survey. And, Richard, you wanna just get up and just give those, and we can give the sidewalk improvements too?
Are we gonna just be able to see this?
Drumroll.
Yeah, let's wait till, let's wait till the regular meeting.
Okay, all right, we'll do that. Okay, fine, sorry.
Yeah, wait till the regular meeting.
I'm just trying to make sure, in case there's any questions that come out. We also have-
Well, we did have questions about the paving thing, that was what you had-
Um, we wanted a sneak preview.
Yeah.
But that's all right.
All right, we can wait, all right.
It's a done deal.
And then the city limit sign presentation, we're gonna be able to share that with you.
And those will be going up soon?
Yes, Richard?
Yes.
Okay.
Date?
Yes.
Do you know, do you know of a date?
By when?
There's some, there's a couple minor risks we have to make, and it's just going through logistics, but they'll be starting probably within, sometime within, by the end of December, we'll start after.
So early this, first week of December, we should start seeing signs, uh, gotcha.
If everything goes, if everything goes good, yes.
All right.
Take that to the bank.
And we expect sidewalk construction to be underway. There are some projects that will be, we believe will be completed by the end of December, many of them all over.
Was there any, I'm gonna say this, will there be any sidewalk completed before the end of the year that I can actually walk on, that'll be dry, and I can dance on with my, okay, it better be-
Okay, we have some bets going here.
We have some wagering.
We have, um-
Everybody's smiling.
We have some very easy ones that will be able to be laid, and we have some easier ones that will be able to be laid. But I don't wanna promise that everything will be-
Not everything, just a-
Finished by the 25th of December-
A three-foot section.
Or the city's birthday, but we will see all activities of all the districts, so something will be going on in, in every district.
No better example than sidewalks create smiles.
Right, very excited about that.
In this conversation.
Hey, Jay Mack, can I still get in on this?
Very excited about that. The next item is public hearing, and this is our 2014 budget. I wanna thank all of you for making time to meet with me and Bonnie to go over the budget. I think the award goes to Councilman Madison and Councilman Gebbia on marathon session.
Most time served.
And they think it went till 3:00, but it didn't. It went from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m., no bathroom breaks, and nothing to eat except for-
That's cruel.
The chips that Bonnie brought in. But I do thank you for, for taking that time, and, and it certainly showed your, your interest, and all of you have expended quite a bit of time, so thank you for that. And I think overall, it was a very good exercise, and I hope we were able to answer every one of your questions, and we look forward to questions that you may have this evening for your first public hearing. That public hearing is, Bonnie will present it, I'll add some information to that, and then your questions will be directed to us, and then, of course, the mayor will invite the public to, to make comments. This is the first of two public hearings, the next public hearing is on the 26th, and then on December the 10th, you will make your decision on how you move forward with your budget.
All right.
Can we, once we, I know we still have a lot of holes to plug on the budget, but before the next public hearing, do you think we could post the more detailed budget online?
Yes, if you promise me that you will make yourself available to me, so I can go over those.
Absolutely.
Because there are some significant changes still yet to come. I think you all know which ones I'm talking about, and I do want the opportunity to explain to you what exactly that means and what it entails-
Absolutely.
With the changes to that.
All right.
Okay, new business, lots of resolutions this evening. Resolution approving and adopting the holiday schedule for 2014. There is one correction, if I might make it bring to your attention, where did that go? It's, it's the, says the day before Christmas, but it should say the day after, because you have Christmas Eve on there. Here we go. Down the list, the day before Christmas, that should say day after Christmas, Christmas Eve, and then, of course, Christmas Day, and then the city floating holiday. So the only change is to strike the word "before," which is before the word "Christmas," with "after."
Page is this, 19 of the packet?
L1, yeah, page 19.
I'm sorry.
So say that again.
If you'll look on that list, go down the list where it says "day before Christmas," strike the word "before" and insert "after," because the next item on the list is Christmas Eve.
Right. Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item is the resolution to establish the regular city council schedule for the city of Brookhaven, that's the 2014.
Where's that, what page is that on?
It's on page two.
Twenty-two? Twenty-two? Remember we had talked earlier this summer about the possibility of going to a summer, June, July, and August, once a month schedule?
Like, once a month, yes, that's certainly up for-
Unless we can do special call meetings, but what do y'all, some other cities do this, they go to a once a month schedule for the summertime?
I'd rather keep on that twice a month, just for regular saying.
Um, I understand, but when you have family and kids together on vacation, it's hard to schedule, I mean, it's, I've seen this in other cities, that they do a summertime schedule, which once, and if there's something that comes up, you can call special called. I'm trying to keep down absences.
We have a very capable and professional mayor pro temp, so if you'd like to vacate, then enjoy.
What do you think, Rebecca?
I expect to be very busy this coming year, so I would hate to not be available to approve projects or move the city's business forward.
Anything from you guys?
I'll do the best I can, I mean, I, I don't know of any conflicts, but, you know, I, I think it depends upon demand, you know, I, I'm not quite sure just what to expect from demand in the summer.
I, I would even suggest, let's, let's get through June, kinda see how the workload is, we could always decide in-
Does it have to be decided, I mean-
July or August.
No, but can we wait, and maybe not June, but May, because I know you have the Georgia Municipal Association meeting coming up, so I know you're gonna have to make an adjustment there.
Right.
And we can look at, yes, absolutely, we can revisit it in May.
Two thoughts I'd like to add. One is, with everything that we have on the agenda for next year, like the master plan, the long-term plans, et cetera, it's gonna start piling up around that time, so if we do wanna schedule one meeting a month, we can always come back and do a special meeting if we have to.
Right, that's what I was saying.
You know, this, but-
But I just wanna know what the sense is, if, maybe this year's not the best year to do that, but it, I'd like to consider at least going to a summertime schedule, and if there are things that come up, we gotta do a special call, we do that, but it's nothing I'm gonna, I'm adamant about, I just wanted to consider it.
No, makes good sense. I mean, May's probably a good time to look at it, 'cause we'll get an idea of the pace that we're at.
Right, yeah, if there's something, if we're, obviously stuff that's gonna be important, we won't consider it, but, that's, that's, we're gonna, if we can adjust at any time, that's, that's fine with me.
I'm hoping the first meeting in June, we'll have our mid-year budget adjustment hearing.
Okay.
You know, determination, we'll probably have the hearings in May, and then have an adoption in June, first meeting in June.
Okay, all right, so we'll look at it then.
Okay. The next resolution is the election to purchase the DeKalb County parks, followed by authorizing the city manager to engage the services of a title attorney for the parks.
Yes.
And then the last, authorizing the sale and leaseback of law enforcement vehicles.
What page is that one on?
That is-
Twenty-four, no, I'm sorry, talking about the sales, sale, leaseback.
Uh-huh.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
Right.
There it is.
I'm sorry, yeah.
And we are working on a meeting date for next week.
Can I, can I ask a favor of Daniel, or whomever, any of these resolutions or ordinances, can we, on the agenda page, can we put the page number next to it where it's gonna be, so we can not have to search through the packet? That'd be very helpful.
Good idea.
Good idea.
That's called leadership there.
I think if you use the electronic version of it, you just click and it takes you to the page.
Does it? It does not.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If it does that, that's great.
There you go.
Does it? So if you, if we, um, okay, all right, you're wasting time here, I am.
We are working on a meeting of the Brookhaven Finance Corporation for next week. Right now, we're looking at Monday, so I'll be getting back to you in the next 24 hours to confirm all of that, and then, you know, packets and information will be going out